Hi, everyone. It is Thursday, February 2, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We are at the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the land of the Middiwacaton, Dakota People. Middiwacaton means dwellers of the Spirit Lake. Our first item on the agenda is 1.0 Call to Order. Roll call. Dana?
Melinda Dolez. Pat Driscoll.
Here.
Louise Heinz is absent. Katie Schwartz. Eric Tesmer is absent. Sharon Van Leeuwer is absent. Simi Petnaik.
Here.
Next, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we have 3.0 Approval of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Melinda, seconded by Katie. Those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Next is 4.0 Workshop Items. 4.1 is the Achievement and Integration Plan being introduced by Kelly Jansen, Assistant Superintendent.
All right. Thank you. Every three years, districts who are participating in the Achievement and Integration Program must develop a new plan that is approved by the School Board, then submitted to the Department of Education. And tonight, James McGee, our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, is here to do a first reading of our plan to provide an opportunity for feedback and clarification, which may inform any edits. And then we'll be bringing the final draft to the February 16th regular meeting.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. There we go. Hi. Executive Cabinet, School Board, Superintendent Nielsen, thank you for allowing me to be here to talk about achievement integration and what it means for our school district. So I want to start by talking about what achievement integration is and what it is not. Achievement integration comes from the legislation regarding racial and economic integration for school districts. So what you're going to see in this plan is not the whole of the equity work that we do in South Washington County schools. We're not going to be talking specifically about English-language learners or special education, for instance. The purpose of achievement and integration is specifically for racial and ethnic integration, as well as for socioeconomic integration. Sorry. You got me? So every three years, as Kelly said, we come to the School Board to propose our Achievement and Integration Plan. The School Board does need to approve the plan before it's submitted to MDE. An additional layer that we are required to do as an adjoining district to a racially isolated district, and I'm going to talk more about that in a moment, we do need to seek input on our goals and strategies from the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee that we have set up in South Washington County. One more. So this year, we've set up a, or for the next three years, a multi-district collaboration with District 196. That's Rosemount, Apple Valley, and Eagan. We're also partnering with, and continuing to partner with Stillwater School District. They are a voluntary participant. Because we share a border with 196, we are considered an adjoining district. And so we have proposals and integration plans in place where we will be combining efforts. Some of the things that we've done in the past are offering Avid summer programming for students that, or for our high school Avid students from Swashco and Stillwater and other districts to come and get Avid credit in the summer. And we'll be working with both American Indian Parent Advisory Committees later this week to make sure that we've got input and guidance on the integration efforts between our districts. So in legislation, there's three types of goals that all achievement and integration plans must address. First, and this is big for us because we are an educational institute, is the achievement disparity in academics. We'll be specifically looking at opportunity and achievement gaps by race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status. The next domain that we must hit is teacher equity. And what this looks like in Minnesota is ensuring that we have recruitment and retention efforts to try to make our teaching workforce more representative of the students that we serve. And finally, our integration efforts. This is making sure that we don't have schools that are isolated by income or by race, that we have integration efforts to ensure that all of our spaces are inclusive and affirming of all of our students. Actually, we can go back one for a moment. What you're going to see, so I'm going to propose three goals and walk us through three goals tonight. What you're going to see are kind of big umbrella goals. One of the things that stood out to me in the last Achievement and Integration Plan were some of the goals were things that I would consider maybe more measures or indicators. What we're going to be doing, or what we're proposing to do for the next three years is to have these big overarching goals with multiple key indicators of progress to go along with the strategies that we're going to employ. I want to reiterate, this is not the whole of our equity efforts. This is not the whole of our DEI. However, the DEI department is the one that is responsible for managing this plan. We are going to be the ones that continue to report on World's Best Workforce. We're the ones that have collaborated with Teaching and Learning Services, our parent groups, and all of our other departments to ensure that the work of equity is not just solely in DEI, that we're all responsible for educational equity. So the first goal that we're proposing is our academic-specific goal. Swashco students will demonstrate self-efficacy, engagement, and proficiency in academic expectations required to apply for a four-year college or university. Now, if that's pinging anything for you, it was for me too when I first wrote it, the reason why we worded it this way is such. We don't believe that college is necessarily the correct path for every student. We believe that there are students that are well-suited for trade schools, for two-year associate programs, for entrepreneurship, for post-secondary careers that we probably haven't envisioned yet. However, we know as an educational institute, if we have truly done our job to prepare them educationally, if they have the skills to apply for a four-year college or university, we have opened as many doors and eliminated as many educational barriers as we can. So when it comes to being able to compute, being able to read, being able to be a critical thinker, all of the tenants of our profile of a graduate, we want to ensure that we have opened as many educational doors for students as possible. This is the domain where we have the most strategies. This is the domain where we have the most student contact and direct student service. What it might look like, or what it does look like, these are just a couple strategies. The full plan will include all of the strategies that we intend to continue to measure over the three years. However, we will talk specifically about our Avid elective course. We will talk about pedagogy, like Avid Strategies, or social-emotional learning, or culturally and linguistically responsive teaching, these things that we continue to train teachers at all of our schools. We train staff at all of our schools, in all of our departments, in these strategies to ensure that students have culturally-affirming spaces. Our Young Scholars Program, which is opening pathways to students from marginalized communities who typically have not been represented in talent development or gifted education. And then also partnering with community education to ensure that if students are struggling in the traditional setting, do we have ways to get them into credit recovery? Do we have an eye on paths to graduation? And are we making sure that our paths to graduation are not dependent on your race or socioeconomic status? So those are things that we'll be looking and measuring closely over this three-year plan. Now, in terms of key indicators of progress, once again, this is one of our bigger goals. We are going to have many key indicators of progress. These are just a couple samples. In the previous plan, there was a goal regarding representation in AP classes. What we want to do is expand that and make sure that we're looking at all of our rigorous programming, that we have both representation and support for students to be in those classes. But we'll also be looking at third-grade reading. We'll be looking at the Academic Success Coaches providing interventions for elementary students to ensure that even from the very beginning of their school career, that we've got things in place, that we've got strategies in place to ensure that students academically have the resources and support they need to eventually be able to apply for a four-year college or university. So if the first goal was around academics, goal number two really revolves around relationships. Some of the key strategies in our relationship goal for students include the use of our cultural liaison program, the efficient and effective use of our inclusion or multicultural or wellness centers at schools that students are able to access when they need to regulate, or when they need to feel in community with people who see them for who they are as a cultural being. We also have efforts in place right now for recruitment of staff of color, as well as retention of staff of color. We've also received a grant for mentorship for new teachers of color, because there's not, we made minimal progress in the last plan. And we want to ensure that we don't do the same things over and over again and expect a different result. So over the next three years, we will be increasing those efforts, not just with achievement and integration funding, but we also have grants in place as well. So ways that we'll measure this, we are going to continue to look at our office referrals. We want to look at out-of-school suspensions. We want to ensure that the spaces that we're setting up, our theory of action says if students feel affirmed and validated in the spaces that they are, that we will see a decrease in suspension, in office referrals, in tardiness, in truancy. We want to see students in school. We want them in our spaces. We want to see an increase of our teachers of color. Study after study shows that even having one teacher who culturally is similar to you increases our chances of graduation by something like 10% to 13% just by having a teacher that can connect with you on a cultural basis. And finally, we want to make sure that all of our spaces are affirming. And like I said, this is not the whole of our equity efforts. We seek to include all of our students across cultural identities, across identifiers, across ability, disability, gender. And Achievement Integration has a specific eye on making sure that our students are not discriminated against because of their race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status. So classrooms, buses, lunch spaces, common areas, we want to ensure that all of those spaces are culturally-affirming for our students. Goal number one had to do with academics. Goal number two, relationships. Goal number three is about empowerment of our community. We offer a lot as a school district. When I got into education, my scope was K-12. I did not understand how robust our community education programming is, how we service students after high school, how we offer programming for adults in need of ESL service, or adults in need of GED service. There are things that we provide that sometimes our community either can't access or doesn't even know exists. So this is where our cultural liaisons, our Academic Success Coaches, and the other people in our DEI department are going to make concerted efforts to go into our community to connect our community with resources that would benefit them. This is also where we're going to see staff development, not just for teachers. We know that in order to be a truly culturally-affirming school district, everybody is responsible for the work. So we're committed, once again, to having all staff be continually trained in cultural competency, in customer service, in how do we connect with people as public servants? So this is our first read. This is an overview. I did not give you all of the details of strategies and key indicators of progress, because what I want to gain from this body is, do we agree with the direction, looking at academics specifically, looking at relationships specifically, and looking at empowerment of our community specifically? Not the whole of everything we do, however, as something that we can control with what's in our scope with achievement and integration, we think that these three buckets are something that we can really make a dent in, in terms of achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, and service gaps in our community. I'll take whatever feedback we get tonight. I'm going to continue to go to our parent groups to get feedback on key indicators and some of the details of the plan. We'll be coming back to the regular meeting on February 16th for the School Board to approve, so we can then submit to MDE. So if there are any questions, I think this would be the time, or if there's anything that I can clarify, go for it.
I just want to make sure that in this...
Yeah. I didn't want to go too far into the weeds with everybody, but yeah. So as the A&amp;I plan to World's Best Workforce, that is one of the World's Best Workforce goals as well. The specific strategy that we have linked to that is the use of our Academic Success Coaches at five of our elementary schools. As we become more aligned and coherent with our MTSS and our reading programming, we now have the stability to create common intervention processes for reading, but also for math and social-emotional or behavioral interventions that might be needed as well. So our Academic Success Coaches, we're in the process right now of approving a slight adjustment in their job description that will include working with our Teaching and Learning Services Director specifically regarding literacy interventions and supporting the new literacy program that we're using in our elementary schools.
Yeah, I like how you talked about not just pushing for the four-year degree, because there are other options for students. And I like that we are letting them know that there is something other than just going into the four-year degree trades. We really need people to go into the trades. We've seen that. And then also that we're doing the community outreach, really trying to let people know what we have, what we offer. And because if we can get parents that may not speak English, then, you know, the chances of their student doing better because they can assist them with some of this stuff is going to help as well. So yeah, I like the plan. I like how it's laid out. I like the goals versus really just having a number that we're trying to meet, because sometimes it's hard to meet that number, but there is progress. It's just we didn't get as far as that number said. So I like this.
Disparity in Integration Goal. Besides just making sure that kids are enrolled and passing, you know, I BIPOC kids and students with the free and reduced lunch, are we looking at other advanced academic programs as well? Like making sure we have children that are enrolled and passing in PSEO classes and like College in the Classroom and different programs?
Yep. So I'm working really closely with our secondary TLS Director right now to, so we're broadly defining advanced coursework, because it's not just AP. It is PSEO, it's College in the Schools, our concurrent courses. Yeah, so we're looking at all of those as options, because we know if we limit it to one, then we've kind of pigeonholed some of the possibilities. And Katie, as you were saying, like, we don't want to limit the options that we have for students, especially as we're trying to emphasize voice and choice and agency for our students in terms of where they want to go. So we'll be looking at all of those measures. To add them all to the slides, well, I did initially, and then I was told maybe we should cut that down a little bit. Yes, but we will be measuring all of those, and not just grouping all of our students of color into one BIPOC group, because we know that the needs of different communities vary. And so we don't want to make any of our student communities a monolith. We will be looking at representation by race and ethnicity specifically as we go through this. And so when we get back to reporting at World's Best Workforce, I'll be able to share some of that. I probably won't go into all of the granulars, but when we're, if there are things that are standing out to us, or if there's things that you're wanting to see, that's some of the data that we're committed to deep diving on, because we want to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all of our student communities and not lumping them together as one monolith.
To follow up on that, so when you talk about, you know, Asian students, because I'm Asian, are we able to see like Indian students versus Hmong students versus, because I know that different, I mean, Asia's half the planet, right? So the disparities within there are going to be noticeable, but I don't know, do we have the capability, or do we have, do we get the data that allow us to target more effectively for those students?
So right now, we don't have like an official trigger for measuring, or for self-selecting ethnicity. However, as we are trying to be intentional about getting to know our students, that's when we can be specific with strategies. And as we're setting up community groups, you know, right now, we have a Hmong Parent Advisory Committee, and we realize, yeah, well, that's not speaking to the needs of all of our Asian-American and Pacific Islander students. So making sure that we have representation at the table from all of our student groups, where it may not come out in the standardized data, because that's not something we measure, we can speak to, we are going into our communities and getting feedback from specific either ethnicity or cultural groups on what are the needs, what are the things that you're seeing. So reporting that might look a little different, because we won't be able to break it down that granular. However, we are committed to looking at as many student groups as possible, looking at ethnicity and other different cultural measures.
And so when we've gone out to these communities who have traditionally not been served by our schools, have we found it challenging for us to have them trust, have trust in the school district, or have them believe what the school district says to them? Or have we been able to build like the relationships that allow them to feel like what we're doing is actually going to be helpful for them?
It's hard to say, because I would not want to presume to speak for everybody. What I can speak to is the experiences that I've had so far, setting up both our DEI advisory group, which has representation from multiple races and ethnicities, as well as some of our parent affinity groups. I don't want to overstate that, yes, we have, everybody's on board, because we have some issues facing our district, much like other districts in the state, in the metro area. We're not immune to the so-called achievement gap. What I'd be more interested in seeing is, are our perceptions of trust changing over time? And that is one of the measures that we have in our community empowerment. We want to go into our community and say, hey, the things that we say we're doing, are you feeling it? Is it making a difference in your perception of the school? Are you feeling safe? Are you feeling affirmed? So right now, I can't speak for everybody. What I will say is that is one of the things that we're going to try to measure. And hopefully, we'll be in line with some of the things that might come out in our strategic plan as well, and making sure that our schools are safe and affirming spaces for everybody.
I think that sounds great. I think that sounds great.
It sounds great, and we need to be held to it. And that's why we're going to continue to come back to our communities and like, we don't, we're not just going for feedback from our parent advisories just to get the plan approved and submitted to MDE. We're going to continue to come back and continue to report on these measures because we want that community voice present in the things that we're doing every day.
And then this just came up, or I just thought of this, but does this, does this program or this three-year plan as you've laid out, does it allow for, like, what happens if a year from now you get in and like a parent, as you're doing the work, you find that like, ah, what we have, this is not the right structure, we've picked the wrong goal or something? Does this have the flexibility for us to adapt?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was actually a little surprised, I thought that it was a little more rigid than it actually is. So the way that the state has set it up for us, we can continue to analyze, yeah, or is the goal that we set, like, it seemed like a good idea at the time. The last goal or the last plan was adopted spring of 2020. And the adjustments that had to be made and what our expectations are, right, you know, the plan that was essentially written before the pandemic started to where we are now, there were adjustments that had to be made. And so, yes, the state does allow for us to come back and say, you know, we've looked at this, we'd like to change this, and we can do that as often as we need.
I was just going to add, I think your question also, are we going to be able to drill down into race and ethnicity? Yeah, and I believe it was two years ago, if not just one year ago, that the Department of Education actually now asks a lot more detail as it relates to that. So once that, once those students start coming through and that's collected annually, then we'll be able to do that cross-check with our AP classes and success like that. So we're hopeful in the future, we'll be able to drill down for, you know, into the Asian, you know, group. There are definitely more options within that, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dan.
Thanks for the time.
All right, moving along, we have 5.0 information items and 5.1 is the community survey being presented by our superintendent, Julie Nielsen.
Thank you. This evening, we have with us, coming to the stage, Peter Leatherman. Thank you for being here, Peter. Peter is part of the Morris Leatherman Company, and we contracted with Mr. Leatherman and their company to help conduct our community survey. I know in conversation with the board, we have talked about doing a community survey every two to three years in either good times or bad times, but having a consistent measure over time. And many school districts regularly schedule a community survey like this. In our particular case, after the failed referendum in August, obviously, our leadership team took time to reflect, but we also needed to drill in deeper. And thanks to Peter and his team, they were busy during the month of December, December 1st through the 16th. I'm sure Peter made most of the calls. 500 community members, so he will share information about the demographics and the information they learned. Along with the closing part of the presentation, we'll include some of the implications and takeaways as we move forward with our long-range facility planning as a school district. So welcome this evening, Peter.
Thank you. It's a, okay, so talking to, everybody hear me okay? This works, all right. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening to go over the results. I'm going to put up, is it on the screen if I, oh, there it is, lovely. We'll go through the methodology first, and just so everybody knows what we undertook for the district. We spoke with 500 randomly selected residents across the district. The interviews were conducted between December 1st and the 16th of December. The average interview time was 14 minutes, non-response rate was 5%. And the 500 samples plus or minus 4.5% in 95 out of 100 cases. Margin of error is always driven by the size of the sample, not the percent of the universe. So 500 in the district, 500 in Washington County, 500 in the state of Minnesota, plus or minus 4.5% is the statistical caveat. Put up some demographics just so you can see the profile. And the demographics are done for two purposes. First, we can look at updated census information and make sure that we, on these key demographics of households with children, renters, those sorts of things, we're within the margin of error for the census. Secondarily, then, as we get into the analysis, we can look at differences. Nor have I got a computer, I got, all right, super, all right. So the demographics, then we can look at differences between the different groups also. So the first set of bars is how long has the resident lived in the South Washington School District? 21% have been here for five years or less, 38% for over 20 years. Median comes in, the typical resident's been here about 15, 15 and a half years. 18% indicated that they had preschoolers, 29% had a child attending South Wash, and then 61% were empty nesters. And empty nesters does not imply an age, that means lack of presence of a child. So we could have a 32-year-old without a child, that's an empty nester for the purpose of the survey. So as you think about the results, basically, six out of every 10 people we talked to have really no contact or anything with the school district, either with a child or preschooler or an infant. 13% indicated they were renters, basically a nice bell-shaped curve. For the homeowners, this is always over, people always over-assess how much their home is valued. Comes in roughly on this one at about 360,000. Continuing. The top bar is an indicator throughout the survey, and it's been an indicator now in all our surveys and school district work we've done since November. And that's the financial situation of the household. Back in the day, we used to ask folks their income, we no longer do that. This question, it's a four-part question, and we ask folks about their income versus their expenses and how they're matching up. In December, 46% indicate they're financially stressed, 53% said they were financially comfortable. To give you some idea of how this has ebbed and flowed over the pandemic and where we are at currently, before the pandemic, the norm was about 28%, okay? Over the course of the pandemic, it yo-yoed everywhere between 50, between 35 and 50%. To give you also an example, in 2008, 2009, the start of the recession, the high we had was 65%. So that's kind of even during a recession, we still had one-third indicating they were financially comfortable. The pandemic, we never got to the level of 65%. We often wondered, we actually went in and did a survey, when you own your phone bank, you can go in and ask questions that you're just interested in. And in talking to people, it was simply because their income might have been impacted, but so were their expenses. They weren't going on vacation during the pandemic, you weren't going to sporting events. So while income had an impact, it was mitigated by the, some of the expenses saved by people. Now, what has happened over the course of 2022 is the financially stress that the start of the year, we were down at about 32, 33%, almost normal. And then everything that's happened this year with inflation, the cost of gas, everything that's happened, we now are up into the, actually, the current norm, everything coming off the computer this January is at 50% or higher financially stressed. So where we go with this is going to be interesting. I'll be doing another statewide, I'll be sharing with school district groups in March to see if it continues. But it does appear to be on the rise right now, the financial concern across the state, across the metro area. The location, 56%, we're in Woodbury, 34% Cottage Grove, 5% St. Paul Park, 4% Newport, and 1% in the remaining areas. And then finally, the demographics on the age of the respondent, 21% were 18 to 34-year-olds. Well, 31% were over the age of 55. Median on this one comes in roughly at about 47 years old is a typical resident. And then we have an even split, 50/50 male, female. Normally, before I go on the results, ask any questions on methodology, demographics?
Is, I don't know, is this generally representative of our community or we just, or we don't know? Like compared to like census data or something like that?
Looking at updated census, so on the keys on households with children, renters, households with seniors, you're looking at the geographic distribution, and we look at registered voter lists, all within the plus or minus 4.5%. I'm very confident it's a representative sample.
Okay, and then the one question I did have is you said like 60% of people were empty nesters. Is that typical for the state as a whole?
No, but across the state, the norm is 30, the census number, I think, is 31% have a child under the age of 18. So I mean, it varies. I mean, you get into Minneapolis, St. Paul, it's about 20%. The higher growth areas and the exurban areas, you can hit 40, 45%. So it really does vary on demographics. All right. Well, right off the bat, we ask atmospheric questions to gauge how people are feeling about the district. For those that have heard me speak before, the purpose of this is after doing this 30 years, you realize you need to make sure that everybody, that the atmospherics in their district are good in order to go forward with a referendum. On election day, you want people to walk into a voting booth and make a simple cost-benefit analysis. What's being asked for and how much does it cost? And not bring additional baggage. So that's why we're asking these questions about financial management, communication and everything. We start out broad, how do they rate the quality of education? Now, I put up the data from 15 and 17, and for all of these charts, I warn you against drawing a straight line from 17 to the result in 22. There's been a lot of zigs and zags across the way, especially during the pandemic. But on this first chart, you're mirroring what we found since the pandemic happened with the quality of education. And that is the shift from excellent to good. You can see it's not a shift from favorable to unfavorable. It's a softening of the enthusiastic rating of excellent. And this, this doesn't matter if we're in Edina, the Wabik, it is across the state, this concern. So in 2017, we had 88% favorable, this time we have 89% favorable, statistically unchanged. You can see, though, the shift, 11-point drop. The excellent rating, before the pandemic, the norm was about 20%. We're now down to 12% as an, as a, as an excellent rating on the quality of education. It has not rebounded coming out. This happened about fall of 2020, and it's remained the same, the overarching concern on quality of education. Two open-ended, what do folks like most about the school district? 24% right off the top say teachers. And then I'll put them in two other categories, collapse into two other categories. So teachers are the personnel side, then you have the what's being taught in the schools, the variety of programs and the broad curriculum, that's 20%. And then the quality of the academics, either excellent or good, academics, 17%. So they're all within the margin of error, all three of them. And this varies from district to district. Some districts are very driven by programs, some are very driven by personnel, some are very driven by the test scores, those sorts of things. Basically, all three are equally important here for your folks. If we ask what they like most, we always follow up with what's the most serious issue facing the district. The first look at this chart, I always tell a client to look and see, do you have anything that hits 25, 30%? One in four, one in three people coalescing around a response in an open-ended indicates that you have a major concern. You do not have anything that hits that level. You have two items that are in the high teens. One is unique, one is not unique. The one that's unique is high taxes, and we're going to see this specifically when we ask about taxes. The high tax category has gone up precipitously across the metro and across the state since everybody got their property tax statements back in November. Everybody got their, their increased assessment last year, but I don't know if they necessarily thought of the correlation of the increase in taxes. And so we really do have quite a shift in people's concern on taxes. To give you an example, this summer, high taxes, the norm on this in an open-ended was 5%. Now, since November, the norm is 15%, okay? So there's been a tripling just in three months on the concern on high taxes as a top-of-the-mind response. Large class sizes at 17%, then we have lack of funding at 13, lack of discipline at 10, poor spending at nine, and then going down the list to three other items. But you do have the two counterpoints here with the lack of funding and the concern on taxes. If we go down to the bottom, those, the nothing, those are the boosters. They're positive throughout the survey. The typical, the norm on boosters before the pandemic was 10%, we're now down to 5%. So yours is about double, about one in 10 people, and they're consistent throughout. They are favorable towards equality of education, they're favorable to potential bond referendum, everything. That's your booster core in the district.
Peter, yeah, so since there was such a high percentage of empty nesters that were in this survey, is there any way of knowing, like, the correlation with empty nesters saying that the taxes are higher compared to people that have actual students in the district?
Yes, I have the parent results too. Yep, yeah, on this one, I can give you that here. Parents, 14% indicated high taxes was the most serious issue. So who was more non-parents than parents, but not statistically significant? Yes? This is, this is open-ended, so they tell us and we collapse it. We break it down in a few charts and look at the differences between total taxes and school taxes. So, yeah, I'll show that to you.
Okay, good.
Are they following the school board and administration? No, they're not, they're even following it less. And this is a very common theme than we've seen during the course of the pandemic. In 2017, well, if you go back to 15, you had 62%, and this is self-classified, saying very or somewhat closely. Then it's 50%, now it's 45%. We've seen a pretty consistent theme across the state on this also. And especially amongst non-parents, not being as focused on local government. I mean, if you think about it, it makes sense, there's been national issues, international issues, there's economic issues, and they just haven't been focused. And this is even if we do a city survey and ask folks, are they following along with that? They're just not nearly as gauged with local as they have been in the past. We went through, and on this chart, I guarantee you that this is not a straight line. There are zigzags here, there are different points during the pandemic where ratings were higher and they were lower. But this is where you net out, and actually, where you net out is basically unchanged five years later. The board, 64/29, the norm on that right now is 55/40, so you're above the norm. On the district and administration, 64/26, about 2.5 to 1, norm on that right now is 2 to 1. And on teachers, it's always the closer you get to the children, the more adored folks are, 89 to 5. You can see that's the high point that we have. So on the governance and administration, you're above the norms on both of those items at this point in time. What about some specific perceptions for folks to agree with or disagree with? First off, do they believe the schools are a good value for the investment? Yes, still remains almost 90% indicate that is the case. Do they trust you to do what's right for the children? Yes, that's down three points, it's not statistically significant. This one has really yo-yoed all over the place during the pandemic as different decisions were forced to have been made. It nets out now, the norm is in the low 70s right now on trust of school boards and administrations to do right. Have you spent taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? It's actually a statistically significant increase from 2017. It's up from 58 to 64%. Norm on this right now is where you were at in 2017, at 58%. Do you do a good job of communicating important issues to the community? And this is going to be a theme, and it links into the referendum on communications. That is down, it's down seven points from 77 to 70. Norm on this right now is in the mid, about 76, 77%. So you are below the norm on communications. And do you consider a property tax increase only as a last resort? Well, you just actually had a property tax request, so it's not surprising that that has the highest amount of disagreement at this point in time with 35%. The norm on this varies just depending on how far out we are from a property tax request for the public. Three perceptions that we tested that we had not tested in the past. Are you, are they satisfied with the decision-making? This, along with the trust, has been all over the place over the last three years. Where you're at right now is 73 to 17, better to 4 to 1, the norm on this is 3 to 1. And there have been many points during the pandemic where it was actually a 1 to 1. It was a 50/50 split in districts. How do they feel you do involving the community? This one, you're at the norm. The norm has dropped before, this, this one was definitely impacted by the pandemic simply because it was hard to involve the community there for a while because you couldn't meet in person and things like that. So what was a 75% norm dropped into a 65%. So you're right at the norm we're seeing right now, 68%. And the last question, I always call this the dipping our toe in the water referendum. The question is, the schools are a good, a good value in the investment, and I would support a property tax and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. We haven't said if it's a bond referendum or an operating levy, if it's ten dollars a month, ten dollars a year. What's the core opposition in concept? And the thirty-one percent is on the higher side. Ideally, at the outset, we'd want that to be at about twenty-five percent to give you a, a context for it. So it is, it is on the higher side, and we're going to see a foundational reason here in a couple minutes on the opposition. What's an overall evaluation then of the financial management? Fifty-seven percent favorable, thirty-nine percent unfavorable. So the norm on this one is fifty percent. Half districts are fifty, are above, half are below. So when we look at it as an entirety, you still do have financial credibility. You have political capital when it comes to financial management. This, this is the, along with the financial situation of the household. People's perception, we ask first, their perception.
Check, check, check.
Hello? Okay. Their perception of total property taxes first. Sixty percent said their total property taxes are high. Thirty-seven percent said average. Nobody said low, and three percent were unsure, okay? On... I'm good, I'm okay, all right. On school taxes, fifty-two percent said high, thirty-nine percent about average, eight percent were unsure. If we go to total taxes, the threshold we're looking at in the high category is fifty percent. Do a majority of people think their property taxes are high? You can see you're at sixty percent. You are a very hostile property tax climate right now. I would love to have had data before November when the new statements came out and to see the impact of that. But that's the current state you're in. Now, the good news for the district is, they don't blame you. We know they don't blame you because perception of total school taxes goes down eight points. If they did were concerned about school taxes, it would go up. I always joke, back in the good old days, when I started doing this in ninety-four, we used to ask, who do you blame for high property taxes? Cities and counties became very unhappy when we did that. So now we've modified it that we just ask it this way. So we don't know the impetus of their concern, but it is not focused on the school district per se with this drop in the perception of the total, of the school taxes versus total property taxes. All right, let's talk about August ninth. First off, did they feel informed about the bond proposal? Not really. Ten percent indicated they were very informed, forty-five percent said somewhat informed, and thirty, forty-five percent said not to or not at all. Keeping in mind, now we're going to see that about thirty-three percent voted. So less than a third of those that voted even thought that they were very informed about what they were voting about. Okay, so information's going to play an impact here. In the survey, thirty-five percent indicated yes, they voted. Sixty-three percent said no, they didn't, and two percent couldn't remember. Kind of, it's, you know, that, they just don't want, that's kind of like, do you recycle? They don't want to save, they don't want to lie, but they don't want to tell you they didn't vote or they didn't recycle, is, is what that is. It's the halo question, we call it in the industry. So of the sixty-three percent that said they didn't vote, we've simply asked them why. You can see twenty-four percent indicated no time or they were busy. And then I'm going to point down to the thirteen percent that said they forgot. That is almost all parents that indicated that. On the, on the non-parent side, the dominant answer was they did not have enough information. And then obviously, they didn't have children, no stakeholder. Eleven percent indicated not interested, eleven percent age or illness, four percent thought it would pass. But you have this pretty, and this split happens especially, this happens in a November election. That's why August referendum are very difficult. It's hard enough to get parents to vote in November. In August, it's even more difficult to get them to vote. Looking at opponents, there wasn't a lot of misremembering on how they voted. It's almost represents the, the actual result. Typically, folks don't want to tell us that they oppose something, especially, especially parents, but that wasn't the case. Of the thirty-five percent that indicated they voted, it was a thirty-three, sixty-five split. Now, we asked then the opponents an open ended question. They could tell us anything. What was the major reason for opposition? Now, they can tell us six things. We're coding the number one thing out of their mouth. At the top of the list was taxes were too high, thirty-one percent. Twenty-three percent talked about poor spending. Thirteen percent mentioned the inflation, inflation and poor economy. Thirteen percent lack, lack, lack of information. And then you kind of get down to the plan specific. Okay, cost too high, it wasn't needed, doing too much. Okay, it was much more macro at the outset for the opponents on the reason for opposition. We then asked six items and asked, did it have a, was it a major factor in your opposition? A minor factor or not a factor at all? What's the rate on the chart is major and minor, doesn't add to a hundred because we, I don't, I didn't put up the not a factor. You can see the pandemic and the economic situation, eighty-three percent indicated it was a major factor of opponents, eighty-six percent total. Their property taxes were already too high, seventy-five percent major factor. Then we get down to plan specific, no compelling need. And we're going to talk about that in a little more, in more depth, a little bit later, at sixty-six percent. Disagreement with the solutions at sixty-five percent. Then we get down to no negative consequences. That, that's, that's the lack of need going once again. Nothing bad was going to happen, and especially in this time, this economic uncertainty, if they don't think there's logical consequences, or something bad's going to happen, people are not going to support. And then the forty-eight percent indicating that not enough information was a major factor. That typically is at the bottom of the list, but that typically is only about twenty to twenty-five percent indicating that's, that it's an impact. So that's, that was August ninth. Are they following what's happened since? No, they're still really not following what's happened.
Sorry, can you guys...
Yep.
Sorry. With this, the property tax is too high. Do you think, I mean, this is really asking you to suppose. But given what you said about the shift you've seen in property tax sentiment based on the November statement coming out, how much of that do you think would be attributable to, like, people's recency bias of getting their November statement?
I, I do believe that that is higher than it actually was on election day for a reason for opposition. I, I can't quantify that not having any data before that. But to have property taxes at the level, the, the high being at sixty percent at the outset to not know what it was, but I, I do think that that factor is in play on this, yes. So are they following the current discussions? No, not really either. Seven percent following very closely, a total of forty-four percent following at, at least somewhat closely. What about the overall, just the perception? Now, keep in mind that we have fifty-seven percent that aren't following the discussions, but this kind of taps into the feeling they have towards the district, okay? So do they think you're doing a good job of involving the community? Yes, sixty-seven percent. Do they think you're going to come up with a plan that benefits students and staff? Yes, sixty-six percent. The one issue, and it's, it's the overarching tax, and that is, is, will it be fair to taxpayers? Now, fair to one person is not fair to another person. But it nets out that, and this is every district when we break this out about the discussions, it's always the concern of how much is this going to cost before I'm going to be able to make a judgment on that.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
So, when, the, this is the one that gets me. So the following discussions now is still they're not.
Yep.
But right before that, it's that they didn't have enough information.
Among, among the opponents, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So, is that normal? I mean, is it normal for people to say, I'm not paying attention, but I don't have enough? I mean, is that the norm in, when you do this?
Yeah, and you're, you're going to see reasons when we get into the communication section too, because you have a significant change in how people are getting their information. And it's, it's non-district controlled. I mean, I'll just give you a high, I'll give you, you know, the cliff note. It's the, the grapevine is alive and lush and dominant now here as the number one source of information. And so, whatever in the grapevine, you know, grapevines can be poisonous and they could be fruitful in that sense. Now, yours is not poisonous because we don't see, and I, I know a poisonous grapevine when we go through and look at the evaluations of administration and property taxes and everything like that. But, you, you know, you have a multi-pronged communication. Yes, they're not paying attention, but you do, you know, they have to at least have enough information to be able to know to vote. And your universe is never a hundred percent. You know, right now, what we found this last round of, and it was the two thousand twenty-two gubernatorial election this November. But I had quite a few clients that we did brush fire surveys, so about four to six weeks out, late September, first week of October. And we go out and test about the specific plan that they have out there. Now, it's hard to cut through the clutter, okay? But even at that point, you know, I'd superintendent's weeping, they had less than fifty percent of people even aware that there was a referendum in five weeks. Okay, so your universe, I always tell them, you're never going to have a hundred percent. If you can get to sixty, sixty-five percent, that is a job well done, to, to have people focused on it. But it's harder to engage, there's so much clutter out there to cut through that it's, it's not unusual anymore to, to have this juxtaposition, so we say.
So when we talk about not being informed, do we dig down into, I mean, I know it shows here, like, where they get most of their information, but is there more like where they got, like? Yeah.
Well, we've got the primary source of information and how they would prefer to receive information.
Okay.
And then the individual sources. And then we can dig down with, with it among groups.
And when we talk about the social media, was there an ask, like, was it from like the district's social media? Or was it from like a neighborhood, or we don't dig that deep?
We'll get it to you.
We do dig that, you do dig that.
I, I, I will separate it out if it's noted by people.
Okay, thank you.
All right. What's their perception over the past five years on housing growth and student enrollment? Sixty-nine percent believe housing growth has increased over the past five years. Sixty-four percent indicates student, they believe student enrollment has increased over the past five years. So the history, you have two-thirds indicating that it has, that has increased. What's their expectation for the next five years? And it continues what they expect, that overall, folks expect to have, have continue what has happened in the past five years. Sixty-three percent in both indicate that yes, housing growth will continue and student enrollment growth will continue. This is one of the issues that you have in the communication that did not get through in, in the discussion for the bond referendum. Does the district have enough space for five years from now? Forty-four percent say yes, thirty-six percent say no, and twenty percent are unsure. So the perception is that housing and student enrollment has grown. They expect it to continue to grow, and they're confused on whether the facilities are adequate to handle that growth in the next five years. I mean, only a third said, no, you do not have enough space for five years from now. So that, I guess, in a sense, you have to show them. You don't have to convince them that it happened or that it's going to continue to happen. You have to show them, okay, you believe this is happening. Here's the reality of where the buildings and facilities are at. Two questions that were new, just asking about the importance. The first one, is it important to limit the boundary, the impacts of boundary changes? Not surprisingly, boundary changes are, you know, school start times, boundary changes are two of my least favorite things in a survey. But you do continue, you have seventy-six percent that it's at least somewhat important, thirty-four percent very important. And on this one, I'll tell you, the parents, the parents are at eighty-five percent, very and somewhat important, forty-two percent very important. On the next one...
Do we have, for this boundary change one, do, did people give any indication, right? Because they, they talk about the tax burden, right? But there's, there's going to have to be some sort of trade-off between how, how money gets spent or how money gets allocated, right? And so if you don't shift boundaries and children continue to move into that boundary, something has to get, right? So either you spend money or you end up having to shift the boundary. Did they give any indication of, like, where they would, like, the inflection point of where they would shift?
We don't go that, that in depth, in that. I mean, that would be part of the communication and the discussion and the facilities planning on what that is and what that balance is. You know, this is just pitted in, I mean, both of these two questions are just, are they important? You will have a caveat of it'll be less important if it costs more, okay? In, in that sense. You can already see though, just in saying so on this one, it's seventy-six percent of the community say at least somewhat important. It's eighty-five percent of parents, which indicates then that amongst non-parents, it's in the mid-sixties, mid to low sixties. So it's not as effective argument for sixty percent of your population, okay? Then similarly, the question, how important is it to you that elementary school students attend an elementary school in the city that they live? On this one, not as important as limiting boundary changes. Sixty-three percent indicate very or somewhat, thirty-four percent not to or not at all. Amongst parents, it's seventy-six percent saying very or somewhat important, thirty-eight percent very important. So on both of these, the, the very and somewhat important are being driven by parents. Both of them over ten points higher in importance on both. But keep in mind, that's thirty percent of the overall population. Referendum predisposition. This question is simply, if you heard the district was going to ask for a property tax increase, are you for all, against all, or are you for some and against others? At the outset, you're at a minus eight. You have eight percent more opposition than core support. That's on the higher end of, of, of being, being able to be successful this year. Typically, we like to see that at five percent or less, minus five or less. Very few districts are actually a plus at the outset. But eight percent means you have to take that many more persuadables. Because there, but, you know, forty-nine percent of persuadables in play. So it's, it's not insurmountable, but it is something to keep in the back of your mind. That core opposition is about five points higher, and we noticed that earlier on in that first question on supporting a property tax increase. Both of those about five points higher. Now, our let's make a deal question. What would be a reasonable property tax increase for a bond referendum? Thirty-four percent say nothing. That's up a little bit. We always, that's, you have five percent Minnesota nice. They didn't want to tell us nothing before in the previous one, but we asked for a dollar amount, and then they'll say, okay, I really don't support anything. That number's actually under thirty-five percent, and that's, we always want that under thirty-five. If we look at the chart, for those willing to accept a property tax increase, comes in right at about fifteen bucks a month on the average house. Twenty-eight percent are at ten bucks a month, twenty-seven percent are at twenty dollars or more a month. So about fifteen dollars a month on the average. Now, is that set in stone? It's not set in stone. There, there's elasticity in that number. It can go up or it can go down depending on the type of components that are going to be included, which is why we went through a list and asked, would you support a property tax increase for these purposes? At the top, there's, you have some very clear sections here of a hierarchy of support and opposition. At the very top, secured entrances at sixty-seven percent. High school classroom additions at sixty-six. High school STEM spaces, sixty-four. Middle school class additions, sixty-three. And then at... additions sixty-three, and then at high school CTE spaces and performing arts spaces sixty and fifty-nine. We then go down to the low fifties on the elementary school additions, the flex spaces, kitchen and cafeteria restrooms, additional EL spaces and EL program, playgrounds, and then three that actually have more opposition and concept than a support, the district service center, the purchase of land, and athletic facilities. It's not, it's not surprising to me the order, okay, of how this bears out. It's, you know, athletics is always gonna be at the bottom of the list regardless, whatever district it is. Purchasing land right now is gonna be at the bottom of the list right now because of economic circumstances. You're now the fourth district I've tested in the last eight weeks on purchase of land, and it's at the bottom. When you, people are concerned on economics, their macroeconomics, they're not so concerned about the future planning for potential schools further out. So the purchase of land. The district service center, not surprised. What does surprise me, it doesn't surprise me it's at the top, but the secured entrances is actually, right, right now, the norm on that is eighty-two percent for supporting a property tax increase. Ever since Newtown, Connecticut, and that doesn't mean that folks think their district's not safe. When the same survey, we'll ask in ninety-five percent will say, yeah, they provide a safe learning environment, eighty-two percent will support a property tax increase. Because after Newtown, Connecticut, and now after Uvalde, you can never be too safe on security. So that is much lower than we typically see. But a, as a whole, I would say that there's lukewarm support for, at levels to go beyond that fifteen dollars a month. In order to have that elasticity, you need to have some items that have eighty, seventy-five, eighty percent support in concept. And you just don't have those items being discussed right now. And that's really being driven by the overall property tax climate and the financial situation of the household. So when we ask for an overall evaluation on the idea of the improvements, sixty percent say they sound like a good idea, thirty-five percent say a bad idea. You can see the intensity is equal between good idea and bad idea. So it nets out as a good idea within the parameters of cost is going to be the primary factor. Now, we tested just the awareness of five facts. And obviously, this is concerning in light of a referendum, that those numbers are so low. Only one has a majority of people knowing the fact, and that's here the sixth largest district at fifty-two percent. But then it's four out of ten, that East Ridge is over capacity, thirty-nine percent about eight thousand new homes, thirty-eight percent about adding thirty-five hundred students, and fifteen schools are projected to be over capacity in the next ten years, thirty-five percent. And this goes back to that chart on opposition. If they don't understand the problem, they won't support the solution. They don't see the need. And the lack of awareness of these facts, obviously, I mean, th, these facts show need to people. So people are operating in an information vacuum on a lot of this.
Peter, is there any way of knowing with, you know, the large percent of the empty nesters that were surveyed in this, as far as the empty nesters whose kids are grown and out and they're not gonna be using the schools anymore compared to empty nesters that just haven't started their family yet, as far as their opposition level?
I can cut the data by age. Sometimes we, I'm just gonna double check before I answer that. I do ask if they're alumni parents. So if they've ever had children in the district. And so out of three hundred and three, so out of the sixty percent, thirty-eight percent had children in the South Washington Public Schools in the past. So roughly, I'm doing it off the top of my head, roughly about twenty, twenty-one percent are alumni parents that have had kids in the district in the past. They often though are not as supportive. Yeah. Though they would be, they would be more supportive. And then grandparents can be more supportive. It's the, it's the fifty-five to sixty-four year olds. They're, they're done raising the kids. They paid their time. They're worried about retirement and all of those sorts of things. That's the least supportive group in the age demographic. All right. How do folks tell us they got their information? This is open-ended. Twenty-one percent say a district website, nineteen percent the local newspaper, which is very high. In, in comparison, as local newspapers have continued to wither in the vine.
Sorry. Did anyone tell you what the paper that they were reading is? Like, is it the Pioneer Press? Is it the Star Tribune? Is it?
I could look, I could look at the surveys. We just collapse them down into categories this specific. Eighteen percent word of mouth, fourteen percent a newsletter, fourteen percent social media. The word of mouth number is double the metro area. That's normally less than ten percent as a primary, as a principal source of information. Social media is triple the metro area norm of five percent, because this is principal source of information. A lot of people don't want to admit that their principal source of information is social media, especially in life, because social media has an age bias, but now it has a political bias. All of those things in. So both of those, those, shall we say, non-traditional information sources make up almost a third of people's principal source of information. Now, how do they prefer to receive information? Now, this one is really interesting because they almost doubled down. This is like small town. You actually had ten percent say, I prefer to get my information. This, this is like I'm up in Cook County doing a survey right now instead of Washington County. And then on social media, thirteen percent indicating that that's how they prefer to receive their information. The district website leads as a preference at twenty-seven percent. If we just look at this as print versus electronic, you have twenty-seven percent the website, thirteen percent social media, mailings at nine percent, about forty-nine percent saying some, some version of electronic. On the print side, sixteen percent newsletter, six percent mailings, fourteen percent local newspaper, about thirty-six percent print. So it tips to electronic, but it's still there's still a significant number of people that want something in their hands. And you do have this unusual twenty-three percent that want it from other people or from social media as their preferred source of information.
Do they tell you what sites for the social media are, like?
They, they do. We just collapse it down into the broad. We're gonna, on this one, we go Facebook, Nextdoor, Twitter. And this is, is it a major source, minor source, or not a source? So the district website leads them as a major source, thirty-nine percent with a reach of sixty-two percent. But you can see the grapevine now. Seventy-six percent friends and family, thirty-three percent a major source. And then as a second dairy, the, the second highest source tied with the website is other parents at sixty-two percent with eighteen percent. You actually have teachers with four, almost forty percent. The local newspaper, fifty-six, e-newsletter, forty-nine, Facebook, thirty-five percent reach, Nextdoor, thirty-four percent reach, twenty-two percent on Twitter, nine percent on YouTube. And Twitter is double the, the norm on that one. So you do have a very, you have a lot of people using social media out here than we typically see.
Can I ask, so for things like Facebook, Nextdoor, Twitter, do we know, and I guess I'm thinking probably primarily of Facebook. There's like people who, you know, your Facebook friends who will say whatever in your feed, and they'll link articles in your feed. And then there's like groups that you would belong to where, you know, like your local community group or your buy-nothing group or whatever. Do we know how people are using social media? Like, are they using it as like, okay, these are what my friends are posting about this? Or are they out like on these community sites where people are having more active, presumably more active discussions?
Not to that level. The question is simply, do you use it, do you consider it to be a major source of information for news about the school district? Okay, so that's, that's the caveat on that.
So it's not broken down by the district's Facebook page or a neighborhood Facebook?
District website, but not the difference between neighborhood or district social media. I can tell you in districts that have split it out, it's the neighborhood Facebook. It's the neighborhood, uh, uh, Nextdoor accounts that are much highly, more highly used than district Facebook. Yeah, when we break, broken it out in other districts. All right. What can we say? First, the atmospherics. Overall, the atmospherics in the district are following the trends across the metro, like I talked about. That dip in enthusiasm, the enthusiastic, you know, as, as Minnesotans, it's always difficult to get us excited about a lot of things, okay? Oftentimes, good is good enough. And so you see the same trend, people not moving to a, the unfavorable category, just the softer good category. The ratings and the financial management, the board and administration are at or above the metro area norms. As I noted, the communication and engagement ratings are below the metro area norms. And the slide cut off here, but while that, residents don't necessarily blame the district, the pop property tax climate is very hostile. And it's, I, it's good to know that they don't blame the school district, but at the end of the day, unless the city's putting forward a park bond, you're really the only opportunity folks to get to vote no on a property tax increase. For some reason, cities and counties don't like that to happen a lot. What about August ninth? There were very, there was a very, very low level of residents felt informed about the bond referendum. Too busy or forgot were the most common responses among parents that didn't vote. Not enough information was most common response among non-parents that didn't vote. And the three reasons for opposition, the pandemic, economic, and the property tax concerns. Those were the dominant concerns, the macro level. When you got down to the micro, it was a lack of compelling need. And I think that that's been reinforced, perhaps that you, it's not that you don't have the compelling need, it's that people weren't aware of what the need was. And then the disagreement about the solution being offered. What about going forward? As I talked about, residents do believe that housing and student enrollment growth has happened and will continue. But only one-third of residents believe the district does not have sufficient space to meet this growth. So the story has to be told. You have to show folks. And realizing that sixty percent don't have kids, and if we look at, as you have twenty-two percent that did, you have about a, just over, short of a majority of people that probably have not been in a South Washington school district building, either currently or with past children. So you do need to show people. Even after the bond referendum, less than fifty percent of the residents were, are aware about the facts about growth and its impact on school capacity. And as you move forward, there, there's support for something, but it has to be more scaled back. And that, that median property tax increase, where I oftentimes talk about elasticity, there's not a lot of elasticity right now, and a lot of that is being driven by the property tax climate here and the financial situation of the households. So I would recommend keeping it in bounds of the fifteen dollars a month. And as you go through those priorities that we laid out, really, there were three kind of clear themes here. The safety and security needs and then space needs at both the districts' middle schools, high schools. So I'd be happy to answer any questions we haven't talked about yet.
It's a lot to digest. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of information.
When I do these presentations, I feel like you all are drinking through a fire hose. And then I simply say, share any comments or questions with the superintendent, and then I'll get six on Monday. But, and that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know I will, once I, I mean, I've looked at it once, and this is, and I, I will look at it again, and I will have questions. But I generally am opposed to surveys. I've told you that multiple times that we've done these. But I did think it was important to do it this time, just because we did see so much opposition. So I did want to see. So I am glad that we have this information. Some of it is shocking and some of it I'm not surprised by. But, yeah, I think I just need to dig in deeper. But thank you. It was a great presentation, and we got a lot, a lot of good information that's gonna take some time to look over and digest, but.
And, and we'll, we'll write up a report. And then there was a parent balloon, like I've been talking about in the survey. But to make the charts even more busy, I just, let's focus on the overall. And the report will go through differences, looking at the overall, looking at the parent balloon, and then statistically significant differences on, on all sorts of things. But if there, if you have specific questions, as always.
And I think as Peter has shared, we had the chance a couple of weeks ago to review the presentation as he was preparing for the board, so we got to hear this. But I think in our reflections as an administrative team as well, we just talked about the overall communication. And without that kind of local newspaper, you know, we've already talked about the need to do mailings out to our community because not everyone is going to our website. So we looked at the survey results also as an opportunity for us to improve. And we know that there are things that we can do differently and will do differently as we move forward. But this certainly has provided a nice base of what our community has to say and the level of support as we move forward. And again, that will be, this is one component, a very important component. And then at the next board meeting, we will hear the demographic update. So that will be kind of two parts before we step back off. So thank you.
Julie, when you send out the Friday email to all the district families, will this presentation be attached into that for families to link on to?
The board summary is always attached. So Sean can make sure that as part of that, we include that. But we always have a, a, it's not tomorrow, though.
Right.
Staff go, or excuse me, families went out today, and so I believe it's in two weeks, Sean? So it's every other week. So this will be out there again in two weeks. And yes, we want people to be able to take a look at it. And certainly, we have tried in our meetings with our legislators this week, meetings with city council members, to communicate that this was the day we were going to be sharing this information. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I'm really sorry. I was waiting for I don't know who. So nobody else has any questions, right? Pat, Melinda, Kitty? Okay. Next up is, thank you very much, Peter. Next is five point two, an update on transportation presented by Dan Pion, our executive director of finance and operations.
Well, I get music for my presentation. What do I get? Well, good evening, school board members, Vice Chair Pat Neick, and members of the cabinet and our audience. Our transportation department has been working very hard to transport about twelve thousand students a day. We have run into bus driver shortages, causing us to convene a, a steering committee to address what the future of, of transportation in our school district will look like. So tonight I was, oops, go. Tonight I will give you an update on, on where we're at with our transportation steering committee and what we're looking at. But before we start, we'll talk about our current reality. So we do about a hundred AM and a hundred PM general education bus routes, and that's serviced by about a hundred and six full-time daily drivers and six consistent daily substitute drivers. In addition to our general education bus routes, we have about seventy-two special education routes. We bus six AM and six PM with our own district staff, and we contract out about sixty-six routes for special ed to, at this point, Hastings Bus Company, or also known as Big River. We have seven AM and seven PM open routes, meaning that we have no permanent drivers assigned. We have 7 a.m. and 7 p.m. open routes, meaning that we have no permanent drivers assigned. Those are covered by our mechanics and office staff. All our mechanics are certified to drive buses, and they often, two of them actually pull full routes and then do their mechanic work after they're done, causing us to pay quite a bit in overtime, but we're very grateful for their dedication. Office staff often has to cover, leaving sometimes one person to answer the phone for 100 routes. At this point, we have 1 a.m. and 1 p.m. route that are canceled due to a lack of a driver. About 170 students are affected by this, or without transportation as a result of the canceled route. And as of just this week, we are now contracting 1 a.m. and 1 p.m. general education route. At this point, the contracting cost is about double what we normally spend. And if we had to annualize that, it would double our $4 million general education budget. And of course, with all this, our activity busing is very limited, and we often have to contract out any kind of activity busing. Just some information so you know that school districts in Minnesota require to transport students who live two miles or more from their school. We do a little bit more than what's required by law. We provide transportation to elementary students who live outside of one mile from their school. We transport middle school students who live outside of 1.5 miles from our school, and our high school students. And our high school students we transport live outside the two miles from the school. Is this still happening?
No.
Oh, okay. Each elementary general education bus has a capacity of about 77 students. That's if you put three kids in a seat, and as you probably know, you're not gonna fit three high school or middle schoolers in a seat. So we put about two kids in those seats, so they have a capacity, a practical capacity of about 52 students. So as we look what's going on, we're working hard to ensure that most of our families do not feel the transportation, transportation issues that we continue to face. But we all know we have an aging driver workforce. Thus, we have potential for a larger number of retirements in the next coming years. And we know every day we have mechanics driving school buses. They serve as our cushion when absences or illnesses arise, and our office, our office staff members also drive buses when needed. We are actively recruiting drivers every day. At a minimum, the hiring process for a new driver takes about a month, from interview to driving, because if they don't, if they don't have their CDL, they need to be trained, they need to be tested. It takes about a month to get all that going. Per state statute, all transportation eligible students are to be routed, meaning that if they fall outside that two miles, they have to be routed. And we have utilized an opt-out option for high school students with some success, but not big success. And, and an opt-out would mean if a family said, you know, we qualify for transportation, but we don't need it, that allows us to change our routing. But it's tough for parents to do that, because it's, they're always kind of worried, well, if I opt out, I'll never get it back. And we promise them that if you qualify and you opt out, and you find out you need transportation, we'll get you back in there. But it's, it's a risky thing that some people feel it. So some of the options we're considering in transportation, moving to an opt-in system. So when I talked about opt-out, yeah, we route everybody, you have to opt out. This way, if you need transportation, you opt in. It'll give us a much better idea of our ridership. Implementing it a different way that we measure the distances. Many districts use a radius model in which you, you take a point in the middle of the building of the school. We know we have 23 schools that we, that we transport to. And you draw a circle at one mile, one half mile, two mile, depending on the age and what we decided in policy. And that's how you determine what the boundaries are. Right now, our district policy has us figure out our boundaries by, by driving from the bus drop-off point to the driveway of the house that's being bussed, or the house of the student that's being bussed. We feel that the radius method will allow for less confusion, less debate on how far people live away from the school. We're also evaluating how changing the distances used in the current non-bussing zones are impacting transportation routes. For example, if we switch the one mile, 1, 1.5 mile, the 2.0 miles, if we need to switch, say, elementary to a different, to a, a different distance, if we switch middle school to a different distance, how many routes would, how many less routes would we need? And would that help out in our staffing crisis? We're also debating or considering putting in a tracking system, which is common for many districts. And that, that will give us an idea of our load counts for bus ridership. One of the problems, obviously, is the cost. It's, you know, we're a big district, and this kind of system would cost, with, with everything being done, over $100,000 a year. It would allow us, it would require an ID badge system, so that every student would have a badge ID in which they would swipe into the bus. But it does give us much more accurate load counts. Other things we're considering? You know that we have, we have to bus people, right now, we're busing elementary students are more than a mile away, and middle school, mile and a half, and high school, two miles. But we also have what's called hazardous areas. They may be closer than those boundaries, but we bus them because they may have to cross a roadway that's over 30 miles an hour. They may have to cross some other hazards. So we've, we're working with the city traffic engineers and the Washington County traffic engineers on creating safer routes to schools. And that's a combination of, of sometimes sidewalks, sometimes better thoroughfares and the designs of the roads. That will take a while to evaluate all those. We actually utilize an extraordinary hazard traffic committee, which our, our policy calls for us to convene that committee. And that committee will include those engineers, and will include our safety, our safety people and our, our bus safety people. And we'll review all our walking areas to see if there's any opportunities there to create safer routes to school. And we're also meeting with the bus driver union leaders to gather new ideas and see what, what their thoughts are and how we can solve this, this staffing shortage crisis. So what's our timeline for this process? Well, February 15th, we're gonna have the transportation routing and steering committee meet again. In that meeting, we'll discuss the opt-in transportation system. We'll receive an update on the extraordinary hazard subcommittee work. We'll consider some mileage options. We'll discuss radius measurement system. And we'll learn about the availability of transportation contractors. March 14th through April 11th will be the opt-in window for school bus transportation for next school year. That will give us all information on what needs to be routed. During March, we'll survey and have community meetings to share transportation information with parents. So April and May, we'll be looking at possible policy changes, because right now, our transportation policy dictates how we do things, like deciding what the distances are, what the hazardous areas are, and how we measure. We will talk to the board on May 14th with, with possible policy changes. The board will make their decision on the policy changes, and that will dictate how we do our routing for next year. And we'll communicate with any changes to families that are affected by the routing So that's our update on the transportation situation right now. It's, it's, there's really no good news in the whole situation. We, we are constantly having issues every day trying to staff all the routes that we have. Any questions?
I have one question. So I know that two miles is within statute that we have to bus. Is the, are the hazards, or is that a?
The hazards are determined by the extraordinary hazard subcommittee. So those are established right now. We're just gonna look at all the areas and see if there's any changes can be made. But statute calls for this committee to determine hazardous routes, but it doesn't get that detail. I mean, it, it has to be, each district has to decide what the hazards are.
So they determine what are the hazards in our district?
Yeah, we, yes.
And then we'll work with the counties and see, to see if we can put in, I mean, like that tunnel in Woodbury.
Exactly.
I mean, that would eliminate that hazard.
Those kind of ideas, yeah. Or even over.
Right.
I mean, think about it, we have a walkway over Highway 61 right now. But yeah, I've seen that in many, many districts with a lot more walkovers. But there's, the statute doesn't address speed limits or anything like that.
And how long would it, so if there's a hazard, how long would it take us to be able to do, like, a walkway over? I mean, how many, I'm guessing it wouldn't be by next school year.
Correct. The hazard study will take a, take a while. It's just not gonna be immediate, immediate changes to that.
So that's not gonna be something we can do for next year? That's more?
Probably not, unless there's some obvious ones that don't make sense anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I just think the radius thing seems unfair. I, I don't like it, because you can't fly your kid to school. You know, you have to take the route, the road. That just seems unfair to me.
I think unfortunately, as we work through specific situations, it's using which door to get to which door, and so then it becomes this argument, and I think that's the consistency of the radius model, is there's a pin drop, there's a circle drawn, and that's the area. And I think what we see is depending upon exact location or bus stop, then there's this back and forth with, is it within that range or not? And the radius makes it very clean cut. Because our transportation department does spend a lot of time going out and driving, and, you know, double checking some of these, especially as we start the school year.
With the radius option, would that include our specialty programs as well? Or would they still always have busing?
No, their, their busing is determined by the IDPs of the students.
I'm talking more like your, yeah, like crossing the freeway and?
I guess that's a board decision on the busing of the, those programs. At this point, they are bussed. No, that, that boundary doesn't affect those.
But they follow the same rules. So if they're within two miles, they don't get bussed?
Yeah, I guess so. You'd have to do for each, yeah, you can, you draw the radius and then the ones inside.
Yeah, so if they live across the street from Valley, they're not, or Valley Crossing might not be a good one.
No way.
But if they live across the street from Nuevas, they're not going to get bussed just because they go.
Right.
But if they live outside of the two miles to Nuevas, then they would.
Right.
For one a mile, because it's an elementary school. But otherwise, they're not bussed any special, there's nothing different for their busing than there is for?
No, there isn't. I, I get a little thrown off by it, only because they have three different areas and they live all over the place, where all the other schools have a specific boundary of students that go there.
But if they live within a mile, they still walk to school.
Right.
Like anybody else.
I think we've gotten the question about changing routes, moving bus drivers, a lot of questions like that. What people have to remember is we're a three-tiered system, and each tier we bus approximately 4,000 students. And so in that tier for a driver, it's all three levels. And so they do a middle school run, they drop off, they go do the next run. And when we talked about that ability to perhaps move drivers, we also are concerned with safety, because drivers get used to students, they know who's getting on their bus, and if every day we have these sub-drivers showing up, not knowing the students, we worry about that as well. As well as contractually, we know that we have an obligation with our bus drivers in terms of the routes, the routes that they bid on and then are assigned.
I had a question about the opt-in system versus the opt-out. So I have opted out one of my children from busing this year, but I didn't opt out the other one, to your point about apprehension about what happens when, like, his sister doesn't drive him to school, right? For the opt-in system, are we, do we know how many, how many people are going to miss that? Right, we just heard from Peter that maybe people aren't always connected the way that we would like them to be. And so are we, do we think we're gonna end up with, like, a lot of scrambling at the end when people realize, oh, wait, I, I forgot to opt in? What do I do now? Or, like, is that gonna cause us more angst than we, than it's worth?
I could, I can try to answer that if you.
Yeah, go, Sean.
We're gonna have a really detailed campaign with that, and it will be both from a district and a school, just, you know, schools be sharing those different, you know, toolkits and things like that with families and newsletters, things like that. Also, I think that, you know, if they don't opt in within that, the reason that you stop that in April is so that then now you can start making phone calls, you can start, you know, the, the personal relationships, you know, you know, calls from your schools, from the district, things like that. And so, you know, you wanna get that through a survey, because we've got a lot of students. But, but, I mean, there's, there's time built into that, so that we don't run into what you're talking about.
And then with, or, I don't know, actually, maybe if you know the answer. So do we have an idea, like, especially at the high school level, kids who, they take the bus normally, but then, okay, I've got these two weeks where I have to stay after school, and then I'm not taking the bus? And, like, does that sort of variability of student riding patterns, like, how big of an impact does that have on our bus, our ability to route efficient busing?
Well, when you put the last part in, that there's a big effect on efficient bus routing. We route everybody that's eligible, so that's why the tracking system will be nice, because we actually see who's actually riding. But it's, it's a very difficult task. There's no easy way to do it, and we wanna provide the transportation, but obviously, some students will start doing activities and they won't take the bus, but they still need to have that opportunity. So there's, I don't think there's any real easy answer to that.
I think right now, we have to realize that our method of load counts is counting kids on a particular day. There is nothing, nothing that is automatic about it. So it's really difficult when you say, okay, drivers, on this particular day, you're gonna do your load counts. I think that Kiri Olson, our director, shared that in one of the East Ridge routes, there's a route for 130-plus students, and getting off of the bus might be 20, 25, 30 kids. And so we would have that load count every single day if we had something that was more automatic and didn't rely on bus drivers counting, writing it down, and then transferring it when they got back to the office. And so that's what Dan, Dan is talking about, that system. That is something that we need, so we can more closely monitor our load counts and then our efficiency of buses.
And there'll be some good advantages of that system, too, where parents will be able to track the buses and things like that. And even looking at that, we can also look at maybe having some of the older students walk further to the bus stop, and we can have more, less bus stops, and that way, we could probably get more riders on there, too. More of a, somewhat like a city bus system.
So, go ahead. Is the opt-in, opt-out, is it going to be, like, I can, I drive my son to school right now, but I don't pick him up. Is that going to be an option, that you can opt into?
Yeah.
One or the other?
AM and PM.
Okay, so it's not going to be all or nothing? Okay, perfect.
Well, Sean's the one with the experience on the, on the opt-in. So this is new to us, but Sean did it in Robbinsdale, so he's, did you have the dual?
I, I've done that before, and, and yeah, so the, the, the questions on the questionnaire or the survey would be, do you wanna opt, you know, opt into AM rou, you know, busing and PM busing? So it's kind of a, it's a dual kind of a thing. And that helps with the routing, you know, both ways. So, so the, the questions will certainly be, do you need it at all? Do you need it in the morning? Do you need it in the afternoon? And then you get into daycares and things like that.
Because I think, too, especially for, like, high school, I know there's kids that do probably something every day after school, but they have to get there in the morning. Because I think too, especially for like high school, I know there's kids that do probably something every day after school, but they have to get there in the morning. And then they have an activity, you know, especially if you're a three-sport athlete or something like that, or clubs. And so it would be nice to know how many kids actually need it, one way or the other. Because I know this one right now, the one we did this year was you just opted out. There wasn't an option for AM or PM, was there?
Yeah.
I, I think the important part too is that, is that, you know, families can always opt back in, as, as, as Dan said, you know? I mean, we're, we're bringing kids to school and we're required to do that. And so if there's, if there's things that happen over the course of a year, job changes, you know, search, situations change, you call the transportation department and they get put on a bus. So I mean, I mean, I think that's a really important part to, you know, that will be in the messaging as well.
Do we do anything like, okay, well, actually I have two questions. So before I come to my second question, my first question is, when we talked about like getting more accurate load counts on a daily basis, would that lead to us potentially retooling routes mid-year for efficiency or, you know, like, I don't know?
I'll just say that as we look at a potential for next year of, you know, making any adjustment with the distances, it takes a lot of time to go back and do those recalculations. I think Carrie said her team spent, I don't know how much time, just on one of those. And so I think it's difficult once we get going. That doesn't mean that it's not possible, but we would have to shut down a wing of our transportation and allow them to do the rerouting while we kept the existing routing going.
Oh, no, I wasn't, I wasn't saying, I was just curious if that was the intention of this. But then the other question I had was around, like a lot of high schoolers, they'll get their driver's license at some point and they get a parking permit. Do we have any mechanism for when kids get a parking permit, they get like a, like a, hey, do you still want to, do you want to look at your transportation? Do you want to opt in? Do you want to opt out, whatever? Like, I mean, I realize most children don't have cars, right? But maybe, I don't know.
I, I mean, I think that's something that our committee would have to look at. You know, I think that the, the other part of the opt-in is that, you know, you have to do it before routes are, are created, right? So that, so that you're creating those efficiencies with that. And so I think that if it's an ongoing situation like that, we really would have to kind of.
And Simi, as I heard you talking, I was thinking, if we had the ability to monitor who was getting on and off the buses every day, and we saw that ridership for a particular student or students that they just weren't riding, I think, what's the reach out then? Is there a blackboard connect or something that we can do? You know, we've noticed that your child has not been riding for the last 20 days. Is there any update you'd like to provide us with? So, you know, when we can track the load count and who's getting on and off by name, I think that that will be a really nice database to pull from so that we can be as efficient with who's riding and who's not.
So if we did go to some type of badge system like that, and a child was an opt-out but needed bus transportation one day, would they be turned away without that badge? Or could they still take the bus? Like say if something happened with, you know, their transportation that they, and they needed to take the bus?
We would figure that part out. I'm sure there are rules about that. And I think once our students get up and going, our kids are pretty used to having badges. I mean, many of us wear badges all the time. And is there going to be that occasion when you forget your badge or lose it? And, you know, I don't know enough about the systems we're looking at, whether that, for some kids, it's easier just to put it on your backpack, a little tag on your backpack or something. So I think there could be multiple ways, but we will have to figure out, just like the kids that might come through without lunch money. If you don't come through with your lunch badge, now what do we do? So, yeah.
My last question is, what, how many more drivers would we need now to be appropriately staffed for the number of students and routes that we have? Like, how short is our shortage?
Twelve, I'd say. Seems to go up every day, but so we'll say 15.
Dan's usually really conservative. He said 12, I'm going to go 15 to 20. Because we know that we also have the daily illnesses and the daily call-ins. And it's been really tough because it's really tough having our, all of our mechanics and office staff out driving buses.
Are those just drivers for our district students? Or does that include the other schools in, in the district that aren't so washcloth schools that we provide transportation?
Yes, it includes them. We're, we're required to transport them.
I should know, I should know this, but are, are bus drivers paid well, like compared to other districts or other bus drivers?
Yeah, I'm looking at comparing to, let's say, the contractor that we use. Our, we have a pay that lasts for like 75 days, Abby, is that it? So it goes up, you know, $2 in the first 75 days. So our, and our, our wage is, we know it's higher than our, our contractors, what they told us. And then we also have benefits. So we're, we're maybe a dollar below North St. Paul, I believe, the ones I've seen. Yeah, I got to look. I, you know, just looking at the postings I see out there, we're about a dollar behind, but we don't know what the benefits are. We have very good, what do, what do you need, Abby, to get benefits as a bus driver? 25 hours a week and you get full health insurance benefits.
And the bus drivers, I've talked to, when we look at that, that age, the age of the workforce, that is the critical component of the work. That is really what they're looking for is that benefit.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to 5.3 staffing update introduced by Superintendent Julie Nielsen.
Thank you. I feel like I'll be introducing a lot, but I'm not going to be talking this whole time at least. As part of our standard work, we wanted to provide the board and the community a look inside our staffing process. When we, when January rolls over and now we're into February, this is our staffing time. As you heard tonight, there were in the, in the survey, questions about class size. We hear the same thing. And I think what we know about class size is kids don't come in specific numbers. You know, when kids enroll, they don't come in a, a specific package of 10 or 15 or 25 into one school. We know that course registration varies. We know that the sizes of our schools vary. We know that course offerings vary. Tonight, Abby Baker is going to kick us off, talking about just the overall staffing process and the timeline. And then our assistant superintendents, as part of the additional teachers that were added with our COVID dollars, our ESSR dollars, I had asked them when that occurred as part of staffing last year, that we would monitor to see, did those additional staff members that were added, did it have an impact on our overall class size? And so they're here to report back to the board this evening about class size and some of the things that go into the overall scheduling. What I realized as I reviewed the presentation is I was definitely cut out for the elementary. I understand the elementary. You will hear Kelly and Christine talk about onesies, doubletons and tripletons. And then I got thrown a little bit, but I think they have a great example to share with the board in terms of the complications that go into course registering and overall class size. And so Abby, if you would, go ahead and kick us off.
Yes, thank you. We'll start by looking at the overall staffing timeline. As we enter February, we are really ramping up our staffing process. It'll be a busy next few months when it comes to teacher staffing. In February, it starts with human resources, meeting with principals. Some of the things we look at is teacher licensing. We review to make sure teachers are licensed properly for their subject areas. We look at teachers that are on tier one license, tier two license, and OFPs. We're also reviewing teachers that are in job targets and performance issues at that time as well. One of the big deadlines in February is February 15th, as we have intense retirement and leaves of absence requests due. These aren't final numbers, these are just intents. So that helps us as we start looking at numbers and looking at positions that are going to be open going into the next school year so we can get a better idea of what we're looking at. In March, the preliminary staffing projections begin when we look at enrollment and we start looking at final section counts due for elementary. In March also is that final retirement leave and absence request deadline in March 15th. And that's when we really have a good picture of who will be departing our organization or taking a leave of absence for the following year. That's when we can really start looking at those staffing projections, once we get enrollment, section counts, and then we have a better picture of who will be returning for the following school year. In March, we also post pool positions. So what that means is we take a look at more difficult to fill positions. So those are positions in our special education department for both resource and center-based teachers, school psychs, speech-language pathologists, some of our general education teaching positions such as business, fax, technology education. If we have openings in those areas, we do a pool position so we can start getting a good, solid group of external candidates that when we go to post externally, we already have started the recruiting process because we know those are more difficult to fill positions. So we post those in March. In April, evaluations for probationary teachers are due. So we're looking at their third evaluation at that point. And then we send notifications to released and displaced teachers in April. And then, as you're aware, we do releases at the April board meeting as well. Toward the end of April, we start round one for internal bidding, and those are for current teachers. After round one internal bidding is done, we roll right into round two of internal bidding at the beginning of May. And then after the, both rounds of internal bidding is when we can post positions externally, and that happens in the middle of May. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Birkins to go in more detail about elementary scheduling and class size.
All right, thank you, Abby. For elementary, Superintendent Nielsen mentioned that we took some COVID dollars and we lowered, we add the FTE to elementary. And so on the slide, it says the staffing is determined by a formula. Where we take the projected enrollment and divide by 26. With the COVID dollars this year, we were able to divide that by 25, and that's how we were able to make the adjustment there. Other impacts that can impact the enrollment and staffing are the IDTs, inter-district transfers, and also any open enrollment that are coming in. We look at those numbers in addition to the magnet lotteries, and we begin to look at sections for each school and make sure they're properly staffed going into the school year. Typical elementary school day, six and a half hours. Out of that six and a half hours, you have an hour for specialists and 30 minutes for lunch and recess. And then at least five hours of what we call core instruction or classroom instruction. And then on the screen, you see how that five hours is broken down. We have 30 minutes for what we call social emotional learning, which takes place before, at the first point of the school day and also toward the closing end of the school day. We have 90 to 120 minutes of literacy instruction, and the variation is there because on the primary, K through 2 is 120, and then the intermediate, 3 through 5, is 90 minutes. And that additional 30 minutes goes into science for those intermediate grades. 75 to 90 minutes for math, and then 30 minutes for science or studies health, 30 minutes for what I need, which is intervention time to get students additional boost or acceleration, and if that is also needed. Next slide. On this particular slide, you see the average class size compared to the total enrollment for each of the 16 elementary schools in our district. For example, that bubble closest to the left, Liberty Ridge Elementary School, which is our largest elementary school, it has 813 students with an average class size of 26.6 students for that, for that school. In the middle, you see Pine Hill Elementary School, 540 students enrolled with an average class size of 25.17. And then you see Newport toward the end, 255 enrolled, students enrolled with an average class size of 19.62. You see some outliers there. Moti-Age, which is part of Valley Crossing, that's in the middle, so it's not an outlier. But that, in that program, we have 555 students with an average class size of 25.23. But then you see Valley Crossing Gateway at the very, very top, which is, is standing along. 147 students in that program and the average class size is 29.4. And then toward the bottom, you see Valley Crossing Single Grade, that's just one section, there's 19 students in that section. Next slide. On this slide, you will notice that the average class size is highlighted per grade level. So kindergarten, 22.57, and it goes all the way up to grade five with 25.96. That next column identifies the grade level ranges between, for kindergarten all the way to grade five, across those 16 schools. One school may have 17.75, and then the school may have 24. So it can be anywhere between that range, between those 16 schools. And you see those grade level ranges for every grade level. That last column is the district threshold, which we consider when we are looking at staffing and if a school is identifying they need more staffing, we look at that threshold and, and look at the potential to add staffing. Now, it does not mean that because they go one over that threshold, we add an FTE. But like I said, we do take those thresholds into consideration. Toward the bottom of this slide, you see the district average total, which is 23.79. And so this is at the time of staffing. Now, the next slide, same information, but we, schools add in compensatory education FTE or discretionary FTE to address the class size. And you can look at, the district average drops to 23.01 once we add those additional FTE to lower class size. And then the class size averages across each grade level, they also drop a little bit lower. This is a more, I would say, accurate representation of where our schools sit, if you were to walk into those schools tomorrow. The next slide, in the last slide for elementary, is you see the different, the magnet programs. The first section is Nuevis-Frontiers, which is Hispanic immersion. In kindergarten, they have an average class size of 24. And then you can see the average class size is all the way up to grade five compared to the district thresholds. The next two tables are Valley Crossing. And these representations are the Moti-Age, which is the larger table, and then the smaller table would be Gateway. And once again, you see the average class sizes for those grade levels compared to the district thresholds. And with that, I will pass it to my colleagues to talk about secondary.
All right. So secondary scheduling is a little bit more complicated. At our middle schools and high schools, we have, you know, between 700,000 and 1,000 kids at our middle schools, 2,000 students at each of our big high schools. And so the, the secondary scheduling is based on student registration. So student registration is happening right now, just probably getting to the end of it. Because of course, as Abby mentioned, we're moving into staffing, so we need to know how many courses we need, who needs to teach those courses to get into staffing. So that's ending right about now. And that will really determine the courses that the high schools offer. And I know Kelly's going to get into an example of these things that I'm going to describe right now. But when principals look at student registration, they look at each course and how many students have registered for them. Then they look at, are there any courses that we need to crash? Meaning, are there any classes that are below roughly 25? Of course, taking into consideration core content classes, or taking into consideration courses like AP classes or IB classes, or courses that, we really do want to offer those to students, we might run them at a little bit of a lower number. Also, as Julie mentioned earlier, we have what are called singleton. So those are courses only offered once, like choir or music classes or some AP classes. So if a student wants to take one of those, their schedule really needs to be built around that one course and when it's offered. Singleton or a doubleton also, it might only be offered twice. And so again, that student's schedule needs to work around that. And so remember, with all of those things, they're trying to make 2,000 students' choices work and give them what they'd like to take. Now, when students register, they are asked to put down, I don't know, three, four, or five alternates so that if we do crash classes, they go into the next alternate that they chose. So we try to build the best schedules we can for what students are asking for. And at the middle school and high school, as you can see, we take the total number of enrollment for middle school, divide that by 33.5 for staffing, and high school, 34.5. And so that is where they start to build the schedule. So now I'll hand it over to Kelly, who's going to get into a little more detail and show you.
The crash portion, secondary scheduling. So this demonstrates a, a micro view of the schedule board. In the old days, we used to have the boards upon the wall with magnets and we'd build the schedule. So at the top, you have six periods per trimester, three trimesters. And then on the left is where you would have all of the teachers in your building. So all of the teachers in your building on the left. And so this could range probably from 45 at our middle schools to 85, 90 perhaps at the, the high school level. And then when you start to build, the courses that the students have asked for then are placed in the center, are placed for that teacher across. You'll notice on the bottom then is the number 2,000, and that's a typical high school or, or whatever the enrollment is at that school. And that's there because every period, you need to have at least 2,000 seats for those kids to sit in. And so every period, you need to make sure that those classes that are offered are going to have enough space for those 2,000 kids. And this is where secondary scheduling gets a little bit more complicated. Because even though we schedule at that clean 33 and a half or 34 and a half, we know that it's not that clean when, when students start to register. If there was no choice, we told students what they had. If there was no choice, we told students what they had, then there would be an even distribution, and it would be great. But that wouldn't be great if you ask our students because the one thing that they say is that they want choice in their schedules. So you'll have, as Christine mentioned, those classes that have 28. And then you'll have those classes that have 150 requests, so you can have five sections. So there's a little bit more flexibility in where that goes in terms of the year. But wherever we put that singleton, we really need to make sure that, that, that student gets that class. So we use some tools to help us try to do this. Infinite Campus lets us run what's called a conflict matrix. And it tells us all of the students that have requested more than one singleton or what classes they've suggested that we shouldn't put in the same hour. So it gives us all of this data to begin to sit down and build this schedule. Singleton schedules, singleton classes are scheduled first so that student, a student then gets loaded into it and they get locked, we say. So when we start to scramble things, that student's not going to move from that singleton so that we can make sure that that one, that one course that they requested, they have to make sure that they stay in that spot. And then doubletons are, are next. So we're going to do our best to kind of show you on a, this is a one trimester, one student kind of scheduling. The courses that are named by a color are considered those singleton courses. We didn't want to simplify it and say it's this or that. And then those courses that are doubleton are named by an animal. The other thing we want to point out, so as Julie mentioned, the COVID dollars. Last year was our first year to give our master schedulers what we call the margin of error or a buffer. And we did try to, we did try to staff them at a plus 3% of their enrollment. So that gave them a little bit of wiggle room because we know it isn't that clean visor. So we have our graduate, and our graduate has requested the blue class, the red class, the cats, the dogs, and then history and English. And this is pretty typical, especially for some of our, our students who are on, in multiple AP classes, music classes, high-level language classes. So as we get into those types of schedules, this is pretty typical of a, of a kid who has, has selected these courses. So as I mentioned, we'd put the student in the blue class, and we'd load them in there, we'd lock it. And then we'd put the student in the red class, and we'd load them there, and we'd lock it. And then cats, and then dogs. And so you can see, we only have two spaces where his history and his English can fit. And even though there's five sections of that, because 150 kids asked for it, it still limits where those can go in his schedule. And so you can kind of see that this done on a, on a really large scale makes scheduling super complicated. And you're probably asking, why are we telling you this? And we just, we really wanted you to see why our classes range so much or pretend, what we may consider so much. But also, we are hopeful that we can find some data that that 3% is helping with that range to be a little bit less. That our low classes average would be up and our high class average would come down, is our goal. So with that, this is our middle school classes. I should probably pause if there's any questions on the scheduling piece, but.
Yeah, I do have, so when we talk about crashing a course, now that we have online, do the three schools then get together and are like, okay, I have to crash this course, can we do?
Yes, yeah, we did that for a few subjects, some of the world languages, but yes, we do that. So we can, so we can try to still offer whatever that is for students in all three high schools.
And do we also look at that when we're considering this poor kid's schedule? Where he has like no room? I mean, do we consider some of those, like, say he really didn't have the option for sixth hour, but there was an online? Are we making these kids aware that, would you be okay with? Or are they saying, I am okay if I have to take an online?
Yes, absolutely. Online's always an option as long as we're offering it online. And so online scheduling is just as, if not more complicated than this.
Yeah, and my daughter's doing it too. I was more broader. Question, so.
Yes, that has really offered a lot more flexibility and students to take more courses because you're right, that, see, we haven't crashed some that we would have if it wasn't for online.
Okay, so then do we fit an online, we fit an online into a class period though, however, or we?
No, online can go anywhere.
In the student's schedule.
In the student's schedule.
So we would just schedule, so if they had four or three online classes, we'd schedule them three wherever they fit.
Around their other, yep.
And then if they had only one, so it gives a little more flexibility.
A lot more flexibility.
But it's a little, they're still that complex because now you're.
Yes.
Going over to the online versus just.
And not to mention, as I'm sure we're all aware, if that student has it period one, two, and four, or two, three, and four, where's that kid all going to go? And that's the facility conversation that we're having.
So right now, they're in the media center for all those online courses.
Because it can't be as clean as period one and period six or where the online class is going to fit in this kid's schedule.
No, my kid just tries to drive home every day, but that's my kid, but.
So you don't put the online classes in the schedule?
We do.
In the master schedule?
Not in the master schedule because the online school is like its own school. They have their own master schedule.
Okay, so kids can, if they prefer online, can take three classes in online?
Yeah, they register.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I get it.
Explain to me how the alternates work. As far as if a student puts down, I just struck with this with my own student last week. But as far as if you're putting alternates down, is that mainly just for your electives? Or would you ever, I mean, because kids have to take their core courses too?
Right. Usually just for electives, yes, because we know that students have to have their core classes. But if a student gets their schedule back, like I think this actually happened for my daughter, and she was missing a core class, then you need to go see the counselor, and they need to fit you in somewhere because they know you have to have your core classes. But yes, the alternates are for electives.
So when some of those electives are required?
Right. What if you've already had all the like math you need, but you want to take this other math? Would that still be a core course or would that be considered elective then?
Unelective if you have all your math classes, yes.
So when you, like, if there's one school where enrollment is fine, and then there's another school where a class should be crashed because there's not enough, enough students in it. But there's, if there's not a, an online offering, like, how do we, how do we manage between, like, the tension, like, if there's, I don't know, like 15 kids who sign up for whatever at Woodbury, but at East Ridge, 30 kids sign up, so it runs fine there and it doesn't, you know, do we, is there any mechanism for us to, I don't know, somehow combine them? I, I don't, I don't know.
Right, and we've talked about, we've been asked the question, can we transport? As you heard about the transportation conversation, we can't really do that right now. But that's why online has really been helpful with that.
We tried, post-pandemic, to do a streaming. So we had a, a teacher, it just really didn't work out really well. So, but we did try, it was, I think, two schools that did try a streaming for an elective class, and it just, it really didn't work out super well, so.
Take a course that's at Park, they can transport themselves, correct? If it's a course that their school doesn't offer?
Right now, we don't do that.
With IB?
There, there might be a couple of kids that do that, but in general, no. We don't, we don't have students that do that.
IB is considered for IDTs though. So they would IDT to Park.
Yeah, but move.
To take IB.
Just one or two classes.
Right.
And the other thing that we have to consider is that years ago, there was a class, and I knew the person who had their daughter in there, and I think there were 18 to 19 students in there, which is below, you know, what we could, we'd consider to crash. But if all of those students want that class, and now they go out to PSEO, we have to take a look at the cost of having kids go outside as well. So, I mean, there's a lot that goes into, I mean, this is one student's schedule, and think about 2,000 students we're scheduling for, so. And I think it's really just to show the complexity. The scheduling portion wasn't part, it was really about what's the outcome. But the outcome depends on all of these things.
So when does this, like a preliminary schedule? So first, maybe I need to back up because I might not. When do the teachers get slot, the new teachers get slotted in? And when do the students get slotted in to this schedule or this schedule on the previous page?
So right now, they're looking at creating the, the framework of the schedule. And then that, that will determine what teachers we need for staffing. So in the next couple of months, all that needs to be figured out. Yes.
But the teachers are determined by what the students ask for.
Yes.
It's happening right now.
High school ended last Friday.
I was going to say, middle school's nearly done for ninth grade. And I think that's something that we try to tell parents and families. Like, we want you to be able to change your mind, we get it, that like you're a kid and this happens. But yet, if we knew right away what you wanted, it really makes this more possible. You know, but if you, you decide to change your mind, it's not as easy as just going into the counseling office and saying, I, I decided I didn't want to take this, and now I want to take this. Like, we'd love to accommodate those requests, and I'm sure our counselors work super hard to do that, but we only offer what people ask for. You know, we're not a college course where it's like, here's our schedule, and then you have to fit into it. It's you tell us what you want and we build your schedule, so. So to that end, our hope was with that 3% margin of error that our range would decrease. And we were really excited that it did. So this, what you see here is the, kind of the trend of our middle school classes. What it, the average of the lows means, so every course was listed, and we removed the outliers, so banned those types of courses. Every course was listed with their, their low and their high. So American History IX had 21 as their low and 37 as their high. So this graph is then an average of all of those lows and an average of all of those highs. And you can kind of see the trend. And then this last year, as we mentioned with that 3%, we were, we did decrease the, the range a little bit. So the low end came up, which is okay, and the high end came down a little bit. And then as far as average class size, similar removal of those outliers. The light blue line is then just how we staff, that total enrollment divided by the number of sections we offer. And then the dark blue is kind of all of the class averages and then taking the average of all of those. So this is the middle school kind of trend on that.
All right, and then here are the high school graphs as well. As you can see, our range also got smaller from now 24 to 33. And also then the averages, so the average of all of our courses is about 32.6, and then the average of those is 29. And when I met with high school principals today, they said their courses run anywhere from 25 to 40, again, depending upon what class it is. Like, for example, college and the schools is a requirement, some of them, you can't have more than 23 students. But AP Calculus, if they only have enough for one, they might run at 40. So it just really depends.
I have a question, when we talked about using COVID dollars, those are one-time dollars. So just because we're doing it this year doesn't mean we can do it next year, right? Because that's just one-time money, and when it's gone, it's gone.
And that's what we're looking at now too, right? To Julie's point, what data do we have that it produced what we wanted to produce? And then what are we going to, to make it budget neutral now? If this is something we want to believe in and what we do, then what would we need to do to make that budget neutral?
So what, what are we willing to swap?
Right.
In order to make this happen?
Right.
And, you know, Katie, that was part of our whole budget adjustment process when we came back to the board one or two times to give you that update on where we were at. We have been much more conscious about dollars that come in with grants and different funding that is, that are one-time dollars. It gets us in trouble very quickly because whatever is added, it is always of value to someone, you know, to our students. And then it's really hard to cut it when the money goes away. And so that's why we had things labeled that were part of our COVID dollars.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, that was actually very informative. I really appreciate that. Next is 5.4, the first reading of the proposed calendar for 2023-24 presented by Superintendent Julie Nielsen.
Thank you. I think I have the last two items, and I don't know about all of you, but it's been hot in here. And I feel like my throat. My throat is so dry right now, but I'm going to keep going, I'm going to charge ahead. And I'm sure people don't realize the work that goes into a school district calendar. I always thought it was easy as when the calendar said, come to work, you come to work. And when it says, stay home, you stay home. But it is much more complex than that. And so I bring the first reading of the calendar forward. There may be a slight change or two before we go to final approval, so I will certainly keep you updated. But what I'd like to do is just to start, and I brought my calendar for this year too, so I can talk just a little bit about last year to this year. As we look at the month of August, one thing we try to intentionally do is to push back our probationary teacher and our ability to hire and onboard any new staff to as late as possible. One of the very first drafts of the calendar, I want to say that we had our probationary academy like the week of August 7th and 8th. So what you see in August, and I'll just start with August, you see that we have a teacher work, workday on August 18th. That is a flex workday. And what that means is we know that our teachers come in before the school year starts at all times, early morning, after hours, whatever it is, putting in that extra time in their classroom. And so that day is built into the front side so that, starting that day is when everyone gets paid. And so that's the teacher, what we're calling a teacher workday, but it's a flexible day. Then as we roll into the week of August 21st, you'll see that is when we have our new teacher orientation, which the green and the reds remain fairly consistent from previous years. You'll see we have a little bit of an overlap with the new teacher along with the probationary academy. So the first three days of that week. Currently, on August 24th, it is an elementary ATPPS day. We do have an ATPPS meeting next week with Tim Bunnell, and we'll be talking about what those days will look like for staff. And so currently, the elementary ATPPS day is set up for August 24th. All of our staff would return on August 28th, which is typically the welcome back to school with their school or program or department. The 29th is typically when we would do a district, along with district professional development. And then, of course, the 30th is a workshop day. A little different than last year, we had both of our elementary K-5 assessment days prior to the start of the school year. And what you'll see in this calendar is one of the assessment days is August 31st. And at that same time, our secondary will be having their ATPPS day. And then as we roll into September, many of you are aware that a couple of years ago on that first day of school, our invitation was for sixth and ninth graders to come in so they could kind of have the school to themselves. And I think we have heard such great feedback, I think the board has heard that as well. So that day would continue for sixth and ninth grade. And the committee also felt that it was important to do one of the K-5 assessment days on that particular day. So on that particular day, the only students in session would be sixth and ninth. Then all of our students would start back to school on Wednesday, September 6th. As we look through the month of September, that remains fairly consistent with a new no-school day, September 25th. And I believe the board is aware that when we look at no-school days, professional development days, there are set days in contract. So one of the thing that we're, one of the things that we're always doing is going back and looking at instructional days, student days, and counting those by month. So that takes care of September, or September. In October, we plan to have, are recommending October 6th be a K-5 prep day. On that particular day, there would be no school for K-5 students, and our other students would be in session. And then as we head into that MEA, as I believe it's called yet, you'll see the 19th and 20th. But you'll also see that because of the difference in days, that the 18th is a no-school day for K-5. And so that is added onto that. And I believe that was a little different than this, this year. November 7th, we made a change based on information that we received. November 7th, which is election day, will be a PD day for our staff. And so while students won't be in session because so many of the elections are held within our schools, it would be a day for professional development for our staff. November 22nd would be a teacher work, workshop day with the employee holiday being the 23rd and the 24th of November. December is a fairly clean month as we look at the yellow, the number of student contact days with winter break starting December 22nd. You will see that some of the 12-month contracts have employee holidays, so the 25th and 26th because of where Christmas falls. And then, of course, the 29th and the 1st as well, employee holidays. And then the committee felt. And then, um, the committee felt strongly to keep in place that January second day, that was a K-12 workshop day. We had great feedback about just being able to take winter break and then come back and regather with colleagues and, uh, get ready for the month of January. January fifteenth, Martin Luther King holiday, which is, um, a twelve-month employee holiday as well. And then to end the month of January, January twenty-ninth, we would have a K-12 professional development day. Again, in February, similar to in October, a K-five prep day on February sixteenth, followed with a, the Monday, February nineteenth off for President's Day. Looking at March, and I know that poor Dana over there was getting questions, uh, months ago about that spring break. That remains, um, consistent, not the exact dates, but the same time. Spring break, March fourth through the eighth, with the teacher work day on March eleventh. And then as we look into March, an employee holiday on March twenty-ninth, and that is by contract, which is why that remains as an employee holiday. And so there would be no school on, um, March twenty-ninth. And then in the month of April, um, after we did the counts, we know that that is a really long stretch. As we look at heading into spring, while we love the light, uh, it's a long stretch, uh, without any breaks. And so, um, because of the number of days, uh, we determined that that particular week, um, had the least impact as related to testing. So April twenty-sixth would be a no school day. And then we will roll into month of May with only the employee holiday on May twenty-seventh. And then, um, our last day of school, June fifth for everyone. And then ATPPS day, teacher workshop day on, excuse me, work day on June seventh. And something to point out, uh, we are not planning to change, uh, that April. When we have testing days, that will remain consistent with how we've done testing days in the past. We just don't have those testing days out yet. And I don't believe next year, we're hosting the SEC. We have the SEC this year, um, but that's always one too, that we would take a look at asynchronous or synchronous for our high schools. So with that, any questions? And I would welcome anybody else. We had teacher union leadership, uh, we had departments, professional development. I believe we met four or five times, went out and got feedback even from our district parent ambassadors, a number of groups, um, in finalizing this calendar.
So with the, um, ACT day in October and then whatever it'll be in April, those would be then flex days for the high schoolers who are not taking those tests, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So like in October right now, um, and I don't believe that day was marked, but October eighteenth, um, you'll see ninth and twelfth graders are doing asynchronous learning, while our tenth and eleventh graders are doing the pre-ACT and the ACT test.
And then, just because this comes up every year, elections, we have to have them in the schools. We can't say, no, you can't have an election here. It's, it's not an option.
That's correct. We are polling.
It comes up every year.
We are polling locations and I think we have tried multiple things. And I think this year, after the feedback we received, we thought that it's a great day to do professional development with our staff. Any other questions? So please spend a little time looking at it if you have any questions before approval. And, um, we're hoping to clean up that month of August. Should it change, I will make sure that I communicate with the board.
Thank you so much. Next is five point five, the first reading of proposed policy changes presented by our superintendent Julie Nielsen.
All right, here we go. We have twelve, twelve different policies, ten different policies, um, coming forth this evening. Are the policies being brought forth have been reviewed and revised and reflect updates in Minnesota statutes, definitions of terms, legal references, and cross-references. Many of the policies you see here tonight are annual update policies. We like this time of the year to be spent, so some of them, you will see that there are no proposed changes. So with that, um, I will start with policy four-ten, family and medical leave. In that policy, as reviewed by the policy committee, there are some grammatical and legal updates. You will see that there are, um, clear definitions around veterans and the military, as well as the employer, uh, the change in wording to school district. And, um, as well as some just slight wording changes from, um, in this policy, it had semester and we are actually trimester. So cleaning up some of the language along with, um, some of the cross-references as well as legal references. Policy four-thirteen, harassment and violence. That policy was revised one year ago. And so I'll try to point out if they were updated last year at this almost very same time. And so for that one, there are no proposed changes. Policy four-fourteen, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. For that one, uh, there were some significant grammatical as well as legal changes. And so as you look through that policy, you will see that, um, there have been updates in Minnesota statutes, um, the language there, as well as some of the definitions.